They've recognized it.
That's right.
I hope they.
But I thought it was scary, I thought. Maybe you need to be a little bit more careful in this country.
Okay.
I think we need to be last careful.
Have you done church persons?
I can see those.
I'm just.
And yes.
Yes.
I think it's like not too.
Yes, Con- I know Connie had.
I don't like.
Talked to him about a couple people that she felt would be good.
Good.
Um, replacement.
That's good. I'm sure Melissa, do you know how she's doing?
I know she was supposed to start, you know, I think last week. So, yeah, I hope, I really hope she's doing okay with that.
I need to get.
A lady, the lady that used to help me make the dress.
Yeah.
Goes to church with her and they send her the car together.
Yeah.
And she told me that, um, there're two different women in the church are cooking for her.
Good.
She's the one who told me a little bit more about her, but.
Yeah.
Then she texts me, Connie texts me.
Yeah.
And I replied. But I haven't heard back, I need to make sure it went.
Yeah.
Never know about.
Yeah.
But I'll tell maybe I'll call her. All right, well, call our meeting to order. And Courtney, it's good to see you.
It's good to, it's good to be here.
And I'm glad to be already in, not late.
In the, in the, in the flesh.
Here in the flesh, that's a good thing. Okay, um, the agenda, we don't even looked at it, let's see. Do we see any additions or deletions that anybody has suggestions?
The only thing that I noticed was it says approval of March meeting minutes, wouldn't it be April?
We didn't have a meeting in April.
Yeah, we didn't have a quorum.
So we don't have meeting minutes, then March is where it's.
Oh, that's right, we didn't do that. Okay.
That is a good catch though, see?
Okay, so, um, motion to accept the agenda as submitted.
I know that we accept the minutes.
The agenda.
The agenda.
We're on the agenda.
As provided.
Uh, do we have a second?
I have a second.
And all in favor say aye.
Aye.
And aye, so that carries. Approval of the March meeting minutes. Lord, that's been so long ago, I don't even know what I read.
Don't have to, don't have to know to you.
Carol, did you get to read it, do you know if we give any edits?
I'll do it. But I just made a perjury reading, so I don't have a suggestion. The part that concerns me on four is correct. I will follow up on the steps for the Richlands Library. I had that young man, Isaac, who has, he's in Richlands, his business is Luna Layers.
Yes.
And he sealed the concrete step threshold at my building here on Main Street. And it's wonderful.
Okay.
And I thought it was very reasonably priced, so off the record, I can recommend them, you know. If that's still an issue for us to discuss.
If I forget, hopefully that's in your report about, we, I signed that letter, you did send it to HPI.
Yes.
And then.
Yes.
I didn't pay attention if the steps at the Richlands Library got fixed. I know they was work, the town was working on it and looking for some bricks.
The, I know the front did get fixed, then we need to fix the side rails, that part. Um.
Okay.
And I also.
It's a little wobbly.
I've also tried to follow up with the roofer, I've called him multiple times a week, but he's just not answering. So I've called another roofer and they're supposed to come and look at it actually tomorrow around noon, which reminds me, I need to text Jamie and let her know.
And we ended up going with our house, because me and you had talked about the roof. We ended up going with J and S. The owner Dwight, is that who you're trying to call?
Mm-hmm.
I should have busted at him, he was in the office yesterday, so he ain't calling you back.
No, it's not that one, no, it's Southwest.
Okay.
Roofing, they're the ones that haven't called me back. They were, they had a date to go and look at it, but I think it ended up raining and so he wasn't able to look at it, but then.
We had some trouble with them getting back with us too.
Okay.
So I think he's understaffed, like he's a one man deal for the most part.
Okay.
Anyways, yeah, that J and S though, they are actually gonna do a roof, so they've been really responsive.
Very good, okay.
If you can't get somebody, I can get you that number.
Uh, they're the ones who are coming out tomorrow at noon.
Good.
Yes.
Roofing only?
Um, I don't know. I mean, that's probably a gutter problem, but.
They had guttering in their description and that's all I cared about, so.
J and S, I need to write that down.
You're gonna meet them?
My Jamie.
Before we get too off track, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Thank you, Carol.
Before we get down into the agenda, I'll make a motion.
Uh, so we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That motion carries, good job. Okay, Erica, take it off.
Uh, here is director's report for everybody, um. Would Jane like one?
Yeah, let's do it, can I get one?
Yeah. Um. Okay.
It's good to have you, Jane, I'm sorry, I did not, you've just become more nervous.
I'm wearing my stealth clothes.
We're always glad for you to come.
Yes. Um, so first off, the budget, the budget is much tighter this year than in previous years, we usually have a lot of give, it's very tight this year. Our electricity and utilities have, um, especially our power bills have really exceeded what was budgeted. Um, I did address that in the budget request for next year, so hopefully this shouldn't be an issue going forward. Um, and also the, the application for state aid for fiscal year twenty six was submitted. And I did get, um, notice that it was received by the Library of Virginia. Um, the Friends of the Library met April fourteenth and May twelfth in Tazewell, I think their next meeting is June ninth. Here in, also here in Tazewell. Um, the big thing that they have going on right now is they're planning a large book sale in late July that's gonna coincide with Main Street Moments and that's, they've gotten. They've got a source to, for a lot of brand new, um, hardbacks and paperbacks and so it's gonna be.
Be here at this library?
Mm-hmm.
I'm gonna remember that.
So that's very exciting, we've got four pallets of books that are gonna be brought in.
Wow.
Um, and so we'll be doing lots of sorting and getting that set up, um, like mid-July probably. Um, the foundation met, um, March twenty fifth, April twenty second, and they met this past Tuesday. Um, their next meeting is scheduled for June twenty fourth. Um. They did, um, they did commit to funding ha- that furniture match. Um, so the, so that we'll have that ten thousand dollars to put towards furniture, which is awesome.
A question about that, um, do we need to do anything with border supervisors, or do you send them a letter, or how's that gonna work?
I think I just need to send Arlena a note.
Okay.
Um, because the board of supervisors have already voted on it, so it, it doesn't have to wait for their meeting. Um, that, I think that's just on my way.
Sometime after we receive their match, whenever, we'll try to thank them, if you help me remember.
Okay, perfect. Well, I, also I'm planning on speaking at the June.
At the June, board of supervisors, okay?
Yes. Um, the Richland Storybook Committee met, um, also on Tuesday. And I just got, um, I just sent over my materials to Vance to get printed. Um, the story walk for June is just gonna feature the summer reading program events. Um, so I've got twenty six different things, fortunately, we have a ton of events going on. And lots of pictures, so there was enough content for me to fill that out.
You made twenty six fires from scratch.
Yes, twenty six fires from scratch.
You helped do that, so.
I watched her. That was my contribution.
Yeah.
You supervised.
Y- yes, there we go.
Well, listen, you got to get me back in line because that, I have that big note that I'm supposed to contact AJ.
Okay.
But I am so confused, as to what I'm supposed to be asking her now, because. Which month are you, are, am I asking her to do ribbons for?
I honestly am not sure, cause I got confused.
So confused.
Cause they were switching around months and I honestly don't know.
You don't know either.
I was, I was so focused on just making sure I knew what I needed to do.
Did you say they'll use the same ribbons for June and July? Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
I'll just reach out to Ginger because I forgot what she, when she wants me to ask, because it's about the ribbon, she wanted me to ask because. Susan has said they was gonna supply.
Yes, okay. Maybe it is for June and July, because, um, the July story walk is a Revolutionary War picture book. And so we had talked about just when the ribbons.
Yep, red, white, blue, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, that makes sense.
Well, then maybe they don't, she don't need to supply ribbons, maybe we need to ask her for in the fall.
Yeah, that would make sense, yeah.
I will clarify with Ginger or with Lina, that was confusing, okay?
It was very confusing.
Um, the, they met, they meet again, the story walk committee meets again, um, on August nineteenth. Um, and I've put in the permissions for about three different books and I'm kind of just like whichever one other could, get the permissions for first is the one I'm going with. Um, facilities, um. Um. So Tazewell Library, we did have one leak early in April, but I called Manes and they were here within five minutes. Um, yes, so I was pretty happy with that response. Um, and they did fix it so that we're able to have the lights on in that area and we're not risking like burning out that one light that it was leaking in. Um, and then also you may have noticed, the outside sign was replaced for free. Um, by Clinch Valley Printing.
Wonderful.
Um, they made the sign and then started, oh, right. So I'm pretty excited about that, I think the next thing I wanna make sure we get is like a little spotlight, so, like a solar charged spotlight, so at night it lights up the sign.
And we probably need to send them a card.
Yes. Yes, absolutely. They, they've done a lot for us, they're also the ones who like print our letterhead and print our envelopes for us, I'm a big fan of working with them, they're great.
Maybe we can list them as a sponsor of something.
Here we go, yeah.
That would be appropriate.
Yeah.
Where are they at, Clinch Valley Printing?
So they were over, close to where Kelly Kid is. But they have since moved and they're over in the same strip as Your Great Escape.
Okay.
Yeah. So they're wonderful to work with, highly recommend working with them. Um, the Richlands Library elevator installation began on April fourteenth. Um, I know I've mentioned it to y'all, but not since we've had a meeting. Um, the original elevator that they delivered was built partially backwards. So, um, the manufacturer did end up taking responsibility and they have expedited the fix. Um, and last I heard, I spoke with Julian on Tuesday, I think. And he said they should be on site next week to install the final part and we're expecting that project to wrap up next week.
Wonderful.
Yes, um, so, I mean, there will be stuff to do, once all the constru- construction crew is out, we've got a lot of cleaning to do, we've got a lot of rearranging to do. Um, but Cornerstone is expected to wrap up their part next week, which is very exciting.
It's been, this is the only major glitch that I'm able to think of.
They have been wonderful to work with and they're very responsible. And even though we had those, uh, change orders, they handled it and it went so smooth. They've been great and, um, Amity approached me yesterday. And talked to me some, um, I'm gonna throw this out for the board, because we had our foundation board meeting two days ago. So we are cutting really close, even with the fifty thousand dollars in change orders, we had enough. We had sixteen thousand dollars left, we gave a thousand to the story walk. And we gave five thousand to be sure that we get furniture for here and get the match, that's gonna leave us ten thousand dollars. If you have not been into the Richlands Library, I recommend you find time to walk in there, but the wallpaper is pulling off the walls. It is very rough looking. So Amity asked me if it would be possible for us to somehow maybe pull together volunteers. And see, have like work day or something, if we could paint a little, clean a little, somebody provide a little paint. And, um, I don't know if she has talked to the Friends about that. And if the Friends could donate a bucket or two of paint or donate some cleaning things. And if we, um, could take it back to the foundation and see maybe if we could. Supply just a little bit to get some wallpaper or paint or whatever we need to clean up the front entrance. Because it is really crummy.
Yeah.
Desperately needs some help. And I think in ten thousand dollars, we should have a little bit somewhere there to help clean up the front of that. Until that we can fundraise enough to get phase two B, um, started. Cornerstone is interested in, uh, bidding for that again, they're looking forward to working on part two for us. So hopefully we can get some funds going and get that on, on the calendar soon. Ten thousand dollars is nowhere near enough for what we're gonna need for that, because that includes putting in two bathrooms. And taking down some walls and fixing that hole upstairs.
But there's another whole new round of grants and possibilities and community service events, sounds like that, it can come together.
Well, Amanda is putting in for some more grants and we're waiting to hear from one, uh, in June. So we're watching that very closely, she's getting ready to apply for one next week. And she wasn't like on, it's the, the two Virginias grant, she wasn't only going to apply for ten thousand, because that's pretty much what they give. But there is not a limit on what you can ask for. So I asked her to be very specific, to put in some numbers and Erica's gonna help her with beaming that up.
Yes.
Ask for a hundred thousand.
I know, it's so, yeah, so we.
And mention, I think seriously, we should mention your award, this current award that's in. This, um, packet that we haven't mentioned yet. And I think we should really do everything to boost ourselves and I think people like to go grant, um, awarders or grantors. They like to follow success and then be associated.
And the ones that have donated for the previous two phases, they see we've got our work done. They're interested in, you know, helping us, so I asked her to apply for Food City again.
Yeah.
Because they have finished their grant that they gave us, which was what, eight thousand?
It was twenty five thousand altogether, split into three.
And into eight something each time, that's why.
Remember back in the day, we had the community fundraisers, which obviously didn't raise near the money that the grants did. But it was a fundraiser that evolved in the community.
Yeah.
So maybe now we can have a community service event and just see who will come out and pitch in the labor and, you know, all that kind of stuff.
I think that would be a great thing to try to pull together a community service day for painting, cleaning there at the Richlands. We also, Carol, um, are, the foundation is working on a fishing fundraiser. Not as huge as the picnic we did, because that was just too much. But it is gonna be simple, um, we set a date for that.
August second, I believe.
Second, so we're looking at stocking down there at the Williams Field, which is also called Critterville.
Oh.
And maybe doing kayaking and they, it'll be not just kids fishing, it'll be anybody fishing. And we're working on a food truck and we're working on vouchers from Jivani's. So that we don't have to do food prep and stuff, so they just pick up and then fish.
Sorry, I just gotta work.
Oh, I understand.
Thank you, thank you.
So there are some things coming together that's exciting to maybe we can go in.
Oh, thank you.
Hello, so.
This is Ash, Ash is the president of the Friends of the Library, she took over for Button.
That's like a month ago.
Yeah.
We, we have a, an assortment people are trying out.
Yes, this is a prototype.
One maybe color show, we'll have to get you your embroidery, but at least you're in coordinating.
So are you from Graham, I mean, the bargain dealer reminds me of Graham.
No, I'm actually not from the area, um, I'm from Virginia, I moved out here a couple years ago.
Okay, well, I'm Regina.
Nice to meet you.
So good to meet you, I'm the chair and then work with the foundation, it's good to have you on board. Wanna introduce yourself, Patty, and we'll go?
I'm Patty Murphy, I'm on the Board of Trustees and also the Foundation Board.
I'm Carol, I'm on the Board of Trustees, I'm the vice chair. And I also moved into Tazewell from, actually from California. So I hope you love it here as much as I have.
I do, I do.
I didn't know that.
I think our small town is ideal.
I'm Courtney, I'm on the Board of Trustees and I've heard a lot about you, especially from AMD.
Oh.
It's so sweet, thanks.
Nice to meet you. Absolutely, well, thank you for joining us. And I'm sure you know Jade. Okay, well, we're, we're moving on down our agenda. Uh, we was talking about the phase two B.
Yes.
So we did have a grant, a, I don't know how you could say that. A lady who was going to give legacy or give a large amount of money for the children's area. But that had not been solidified, now she has some dementia and her caretaker says that she's not aware that that was her wishes. So we've talked to a couple of people and Amity brought that up too. And Amity said everybody knows that she wanted money to go to the children's area.
I hope she's not persuading the lady to give it to the caretaker. I'm telling you, that's classic.
We, we had looked forward to that, but now that is not looking like that's coming together, so it's.
Let me share with you also, that people with early dementia, they are often perfectly fine in the morning and then, you know, as the day goes into sunset. I will share with you, as an attorney who does estate planning, that they only have to be competent at that moment in time. Okay, to direct their attorney what to do and then to execute. And they don't have to be competent the way we would think of like living alone, they have to know who they are. They have to know the objects of their bounty, like I have a son and he's alive and I have a daughter and she's deceased, you know, that, that sort of thing. They don't have to know anybody and everybody and who's president and all of that, they just have to know who they are and who their natural heirs would be. And then they have to, um, know what their assets are, like I have a house and a farm and a car and a savings account. Right, it isn't the level of detail that one would expect in order to execute it with. So again, might be worthwhile to check another source other than the caregiver.
Does she have an attorney?
That's, I am not sure, Amity knows her very well. And Amity had went and saw her the, yesterday morning before I talked to Amity. And she knew Amity. So I don't know, how would you go about helping or assisting and collaborating with something like that, Carol, I don't know.
I would take advantage of it being a small town, Amity probably knows what lawyer she's been dealing with, hopefully she has been dealing with a lawyer. And she has not been frankly, at this lady's request or agreement, Amity, and I would do everything before noon. Okay, because I want people sunset. And I've had clients, I just make the family bring them in before noon, you know, and every time it's the same, the same. But that's not the same thing as what you can think and feel and remember at five o'clock in the afternoon. But at any rate, I would, and if she doesn't have a lawyer yet, then frankly, if this lady tells Amity, now we don't wanna pressure her or.
Absolutely.
If Amity says, is that still what you want to do, and this lady says, it's perfectly acceptable to make an appointment for that lady and take her in at ten or eleven in the morning. And then, now I don't know about other attorneys, but I always met with those clients alone, that somebody had to bring them in. I'm like, thank you so much, why don't you go out to parties and get a cup of coffee while we talk? And then in a wall office behind closed doors, that person says exactly what they want or don't want. And that's, um, sufficient, you know, to meet ethical requirements, because of course the lawyer's gonna do whatever the client wants.
Okay, because I know Ginger and Valerie and several people, she has told them. And so they have said to me, everybody knows that was her wish to give to the children's area.
So I'll see if I can reach out and speak to some of them that's close to her, see if somebody feels comfortable taking her to a lawyer in the morning. Letting them meet behind closed doors, you know, and then whatever the decision is. And hopefully, if this lady says that is what she wants to the lawyer, then that they'll make a next appointment to come back in a week and execute a document. And if the lawyer doesn't make a follow-up appointment, then it's none of our business, right? And then no matter what she says, right? Cause people say, I like your dress, doesn't it be polite sometimes?
Right, right.
But that would be a legitimate ethical way to see if this lady is serious and can and will make that gift. And I would do it sooner than later, because right, eventually, time will pass and she might be truly incapable of knowing that.
Okay, well, that's good information, because I did not, I did not, was not sure exactly how that works legally. And had hoped that maybe she had put something in the wheel that would execute it later.
Whoever drives her to the lawyer is not gonna go in the room, is not gonna participate in the conversation, so there's no undue influence or pressure.
Exactly. Okay, so that's really all extra I wanted to add, did I miss anything?
No, that was helpful, thank you. Um. The, the other part about Richlands, we already talked about, which is that the roofer that was supposed to be out, hasn't been out, but I have J and S coming out tomorrow at noon. And I have Missed Jamie, so she'll, she'll meet them.
And if you help me kind of look at, once that elevator is finished next week.
Yeah.
Uh, with the cleanup and everything.
Yes.
We'll see if we can coordinate some stuff and maybe if you can talk to the Friends and since she's here. Um, I had mentioned to her, maybe if the Friends would be interested in donating a can or two or three of paint or something to help with that Richlands, uh, front area. And let's try to pull together and help them get that looking a little better until it can be further remodeled.
Um, all right, programs services and collections.
Okay.
Um, we are so close to summer reading, y'all. Um, we, yeah, so first of all, um, Down on the Farm Party with our June twenty twenty four one was awarded. Um, the Outstanding All Ages Program by, by the Virginia Public Library Directors Association at their spring meeting, which is awesome. Um, so this year's Down on the Farm is June fourteenth from ten to one at Fairgrounds. If y'all can, please try and make it out, they're offering free lunch to everybody, which is exciting, um, and that's one of our biggest events of the year, we really get. Big crowd, like probably around five hundred people usually out to that. Um, and you know, that's in conjunction with the, with the Williams Committee, the Farm Bureau, and they do an amazing job. And this year they're trying to go all out, they've invited like the governor, all kinds of folks to come out. Um, I, like all, all kinds of like officials and stuff, they're hoping to come out. Um, so there's that. Um, summer reading, our twenty twenty five theme is Color Our World, I'm gonna pack out a brochure to all of y'all, so you all. Um, have all of the events. Um, our children's department has been hard at work getting that all together. Um, Millions of Minutes are also starts June first. Um.
What's that?
Millions of Minutes, that's, um.
Minutes, yes.
Kind of an all ages reading challenge for the summer, that starts June first and I think goes through August thirty first.
Will there be a link on the website to like document the minutes?
It will be on our homepage, Chris has already got that. It will be on our homepage. Chris has already got that scheduled to go up.
And you just register for that?
Yeah, like you don't even have to register. You just, as soon as you're finished with a book or if you want to do it every day, log your reading minute, you just go click on the form and you enter in your minute.
It's very simple and very fast.
Yes.
It takes no time to do it.
There's like three questions.
I had family in last August and um they went to the Snakes and Snacks lottery event at the fair and they're still talking about.
We've outgrown, um, so Tina Altizer does, is doing our snakes for us. She's she's wonderful and she's a master naturalist. She's wonderful about partnering with us for programs. But we've outgrown the shelter up at Lincolnshire, so we're having to move it out to Knuckles Hall this year. Yeah, several hundred people come out to that event. And she does a wonderful job. I think my nine-year-old, Aiden, is like her biggest fan.
Wouldn't it be awesome if we could get books for the first fifty children?
Yes.
The first hundred.
Yes. Well, I think one of the biggest place we're, one of the biggest things we're trying to get that for is at for Down on the Farm. We've applied for a small grant um to hand out books to everybody who comes to that event. So yes, and every, y'all should also take a little little bookmark.
I love this brochure.
Good, thank you.
Oh, you even did Spanish on the back.
Yeah.
I was looking at this Winnie the Pooh sticks.
Yes. That's with Crab Orchard Museum, I think. Um, I think they like race in the little creek there. I don't.
Drop it on the side of the bridge. Whoever stick comes out first.
Yeah.
That's from Winnie the Pooh.
Well, that seems like a story.
Drop it on one side of the bridge.
Yes.
Whoever stick comes out first wins.
Yes.
That seems like a lot of fun.
Yeah.
They get to decorate their sticks so you can tell who's who.
Yeah. So lots of activities planned. It's gonna be, yeah, I mean, summer reading is kind of our busiest time of the year. Um, so we're looking forward to it. Um, Richland, the Richland Library, Renee has been partnering with Teen Venture to art, to offer an art program for teens, which has been gone over really well.
Do they get a um director for the teen center?
They have, yes.
Do you know who that is?
I, thank you, yes.
Rosalie? I can't remember her last name.
I have met her.
Rosalie, Roseanne, something with an R.
Yeah, and she she was a teen there. Um, and so she supports their mission and all that kind of stuff. I met her at a Board of Supervisors meeting um, because they presented for the Board of Supervisors. Um, and she was, she was very nice. So, yeah.
Awesome.
Yeah.
That's good. So when's it gonna open back up or has it already?
I have not. I I want to say I heard that it has opened back up. I don't remember when and I don't know to the extent of like hours and normal operations or anything.
Okay.
But I think it has opened.
Because when they first closed it back in the winter, they was not gonna open it until school started this coming year.
Yes.
But I've been seeing cars there, which made me wonder if they decided to change that and open early.
I think they had even a few more um delays than what they expected, some more change of hands. And so I think currently Rose, Roseanne, maybe that's, she has, uh, I think she's she's gotten it. I want to say up running. I think they're still very much looking for volunteers, uh, but it is going.
Good.
Um, we've also got several new programs at Bluefield. Um, Ms. Belinda has started a new music program um, which was really good. I was there the other week for that program, so they have a nice fun time making music. Um, I think she's also got a like nocturnal homeschooling program going on, which is pretty cool. Um, Candy and Lisa have both attended. Um, we've, we've had several um Tazewell County Public Schools and Head Start enrollment events around the county that they've attended. Um, Ms. Belinda was also the featured reader for the Dial a Story program organized by the Library of Virginia. That was pretty cool. Um, we have a new Friday morning social here on Tazewell, in in Tazewell on Friday mornings from ten to twelve. Um, and we also have a monthly board game meetup um that we're starting in June. And that's from a patron request. Um, and you know, Chris is very into board games, so he was talking the last time that we um um, I think it was a sit and stitch, one of the sit and stitch spouses was sitting playing a board game. And so he and Chris got to talking and they were, so they were excited about maybe getting a, getting a group up and going.
What's the new Friday morning social?
Um, just a, we had a patron who asked if we could have like a coloring group just to sit around and do some coloring. And so I was like, sure, why not? Let's just make it a little social because I feel like we've got um several a a good way to get like especially maybe seniors out who maybe don't get as much socialization. Like I've noticed our sit and stitch program, which we only have once a month, we have several like widows whose children are kind of like, you need to get out of the house and socialize. So um, um, patron request and so it's got cul, we've got coloring puzzles and I usually make coffee. And so.
So is it here?
Yeah, it's here. We just hold it over in that area. And I'm I'm hoping that it'll take off a little bit more. We've had kind of like a slow response. We've gotten some of, like Cumberland Mountain has brought their it's basically like adult daycare group. Um, they've come out to it. And we've had some, you know, the occasional patrons stop by and do some stuff. So I'm ho, I'm hoping that it'll grow over time. I'm having it every Friday morning, you know. It's easy enough to prepare for. All I have to do is put out some stuff and if nobody shows up, okay, just save it for next time. No big deal.
Sometimes it takes a while for programs to catch on.
Yeah. Um, so yeah, maybe, maybe over the summer.
I just wondered if that was kind of, I know Tammy and maybe it's pre-COVID.
Yeah.
Used to do some kind of group social type thing at the well, I believe.
That was her Inspiration Book Club, Inspirational Book Club, which actually, I wouldn't mind getting started up again. Yeah.
Who's doing that job now? Tammy's job?
That is open. We need to advertise.
We need to hire for that, okay.
Um, so I'm looking to hire for that around July, get it, get us through this budget season and then hire for. Um, so um, as far as trends go, we're we're nearing the end of our fiscal year, so I've been doing, looking at a lot of the data from this past year. Um, and just some fun things to note. Um, our hoopla and Libby usage have just like, that they've increased like crazy every single year. So people are really enjoying eBooks and audiobooks on hoopla and Libby, especially, um, I mean, most of our e-circulation comes from Libby. Um, but hoopla also has just like really, really grown.
That makes me remember my brother-in-law wants to sign up.
Yes.
Does he have to stop in a branch or can they sign up online?
We do digital cards over the phone. It would only be accessible for, you know, he provides as much information as, you know, your name, if he'll give us his address. And we'll give you a card.
So does, do they just go to the website or do they call or how do you do that?
Facebook, we've done them through email. Um, you can call on the phone because we do, we do have older patrons.
I think we started that during COVID.
And we have some that can't get here and that way they still have digital access. We still have them as a patron.
Well, he travels all the time and he's like, uh, audible is so expensive.
It is.
And I hear the library has audio and I said, yeah, we do. So how do I do that? I said, go to the Richlands Branch. I don't know.
Yeah.
Get us a call.
Are you guys so?
Yeah, they'll figure it out.
So they can email or call?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, good to know that.
Um, figu, physical circulation has really picked up here in Tazewell, obviously because we're back open now. Um, so if you look at physical circulation, it's kind of skewed because it looks like it's up by like a thousand percent. So I don't necessarily have a good report on like overarching trends yet. It's more just like it's up and that's exciting, but we need to wait a few years before I can say like, you know.
Isn't it amazing that when we opened back up, they were right there and ready?
Yes, definitely.
Needs us.
Speaking, speaking of which, um, pretty much every since, every month since we've been reopened, we've done about fifty new patrons per month, which is a lot for us. I mean, that's on, we're probably over two hundred fifty new patrons just since we reopened. Um, which is really exciting.
Here.
And that's, that's just in Tazewell, yeah.
Am I correct that we're still tracking stats to show how we contribute to improved graduation rates? I thought I remember from years ago that we were.
I had started to compile some research on that and yes, that ties into our, um, I think that's our Babies Need Books campaign that really started and we were tying it to, um, I want to say third grade because that's when they first start doing SOLs, increasing, seeing returns on that.
I, this is good because I've read for several years that the long-term studies of Head Start show that the benefits are starting to fade by third, fourth, fifth grade. But if our intervention as the library steps in, we can supplement or um, step right in and then, because we have actually, the last time I checked the statistics, which has been several years, we have a very good graduation rate for such a small town.
We do.
And I think what the library does to um improve and maintain literacy has to be contributing to that. So you know what it is. It all contributes to budget. I mean, we see the stats, but I think we should continue to have that to show that there's continuity and we contribute to literacy and graduation rates.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's good that we're maintaining.
Um, yes. Um, we did renew Microsoft three hundred sixty-five recently. That's what all our staff uses, obviously for like Word and Excel and those kinds of things. Um, we're, we're also gonna be looking to migrate our servers to the cloud in the near future. We currently use physical servers, um, which is a little bit outdated. And um, our Richland server, yeah, our Richland server um does need to be replaced. Um, but when we asked for a quote for um our IT company, who's usually who would replace it, um, they don't do that anymore.
Wow, great.
They were like, yeah, that's outdated. We're not doing that anymore. Um, so we're gonna need to consider moving our servers to the cloud, probably in the near future. Um, and that's gonna be around ten thousand dollars. Um, so just.
And what do we pay right now?
Just a heads up. Well, right now we just own the server.
Do we have a monthly fee though?
No, we just buy it outright and we don't have a recurring fee. But when we, when we buy it, it is ten, around ten thousand dollars.
That's a good investment.
So my upgrading to the cloud, that will also be about ten thousand dollars. So I guess, big picture, it ends up costing the same. It's just a different.
Is that ten thousand dollars a year for the cloud or is that a one-time fee?
I don't think so. I think that's most likely be the.
Unless we want additional storage.
Yeah.
Would that be current? And I wouldn't think we need.
That's a good question about recurring.
Because most of us do have a reoccurring fee for the cloud.
Yeah. So good question. I'll check on that. We, we can't afford it till July anyway. Um, but that is something coming up that we'll have to look at. Um, J C was here last Tuesday and he fixed the Wi-Fi access points for us. Thank goodness, we were having really a lot of trouble getting a Wi-Fi signal back in the staff area and in the kids' room. Um, but he's, he fixed our access points for us, so that's good. And he also um fixed all of our public computers. We'd had a few of them had been out of order just for various random things. Um, but he was able to get those all fixed up. Um, we didn't have any work anniversaries this month. And then I have a lot of things on the calendar, um, just after our last board meeting. Things that we've been up to, meetings that I've had going on. Um. And.
What time is the Board of Supervisors meeting in June?
So it technically starts at four o'clock and that's probably when I would go is in the department reports, usually after Ken. Ken Dunford, he usually got talks at like four fifteen to do the engineering report and he reports every month. And I usually, when I go, I go right after him. Um, so probably between four fifteen and four thirty. Um, but then after that, they go into executive session for usually an hour and a half and then they come back out around six o'clock.
Has that kind shortened the one, how long they're staying at night? Because I think they changed that schedule, yes.
That they, they still go pretty late.
They still go pretty late.
Yeah, because that's, that's their first executive session, but they usually also go into executive session at the tail end. And I don't stick around to wait for them to come out of that second executive session, which I would like to, but usually they don't come out until like ten or eleven o'clock at night.
Well, I know so many people have said to me that they would go to more Board of Supervisors meetings if there weren't those breaks. That they feel like that they're left sitting there.
Yeah.
But they have to do some business behind doors, but they have done a better job, I guess, doing those department reports before and then having dinner and then because they work all day and then come in there to the board meeting.
They have to have time for.
Exhausting for them, I know.
Yeah.
As well as for people that comes. So I usually either, I usually wait and come at six o'clock or so when they come after dinner. Then you miss the department reports.
Yeah, which uh honestly, most of the time is usually just Ken. He's, he's the one who's like, every single month he's gonna be there. Every now and then it's like the PSA will come, I think it's the PSA. Every now and then another, another department will be on there too, but yeah, usually it's him. And usually he's talking about the landfill. That's the biggest, biggest thing going on. Yeah. So anyway, that's a lot of what we've got going on. Um, if, any questions?
I do. I have a question. Uh, so with the Millions of Minutes coming up, I guess my, one of my questions is, I want to say last year, um, there was something to talk, I don't remember the exact word. It was something beans. I don't remember what it was.
Bean stack.
Yeah, bean, there we go. So is, is this one, is it gonna be similar to last year where it was like, click this link and enter the information that way? Or is Bean Stack gonna be integrated? What was it?
I don't think we're using Bean Stack.
Okay.
Part of the problem is that I think Bean Stack is funded through the Library of Virginia and I don't know that they're gonna have funding to continue that. So, um, it's kind of like we don't want to introduce something just to yank it away.
Exactly.
So I, I think it's just gonna be the regular.
Right, okay. And then the fault would be, um, I know the goal is, of course, the um million, well, a million, but um uh, last year, I can't remember what it was. Was there like a collective total of what last year's was and like a breakdown of like what populations like seem to really report? Not that, like, not that, sorry, need the information, just out of curiosity.
Okay, but can you, can you say that again?
Yes, maybe. Uh, so I would, just a curious question of like, more of those that reported data. I'm curious of like what populations reported.
For Millions of Minutes?
Yes, and like what, like what people responded and um, yeah, like what, yeah.
That's a good question. Um, because I don't know, it, it depends on what year we're looking at because some years we haven't collected that granular of data. We're just like, just give us the number of minutes you read and we're not gonna collect any other information. And in other years we've collected like, tell us what grade level you're in, those kinds of things. So I'm not really, I don't really know off the top of my head.
Yeah, that was just more of a curi, like a, just a curiosity question of.
Yeah, that is a good question.
Are you talking about Millions of Minutes? Seems like they ask too, age, like range.
Yes.
Uh, male or female?
Yeah, well, I think the very first year that we did it, we had specific questions that we were looking for because it was tied to a grant.
Okay.
Um, but since then it hasn't really been tied to a grant, but we still have all the materials from it. So we just reuse the materials over and over and kind of make it our own thing from there.
You know what I think is amazing about what we do with grants? When we receive grant money, I don't know of one time that we have not fulfilled the project that we applied for the grant money for. And I have learned over the past decade, that is not necessarily automatic. People will apply for a grant, receive the money and then for some reason their project falls through. And the grant money was given in good faith and maybe the project was started with good faith, but, right? So I think that's very impressive.
That's probably why we've lost a lot of the grant fundings in different areas too. And I know that some, um, the um foundations that we had applied for, for our previous phases, uh, Amanda told us that they're merging together. Three of them will now become one and then another one. Not just anyone can apply. You have to apply for an invite and then they choose cer, certain people that are invited to apply for the grant. So a lot of the grant processing is changing.
Well, and of course, their money's really tight because anybody that has grant money to give, they've got money invested that generates income. And just like us with our foundation, with our money that's invested, right? Every night I hear on the news that the markets are cra- Every night, I hear on the news that the markets are crashing, so they're not generating that much income right now. So I'm not surprised they're merging to get some income growth and squeak it out of what's going on with all our changes. So, but that's the stock market, we just have to think long-term, long-term, long-term.
But we're not losing, when we look at our trust fund, it's not losing.
Thank you very much. But seriously, I think that's something else, you know, to, not every grant recipient is able to. Complete their project. I was shocked, I couldn't quote a rate right now, but the percentage of actual completion of grant recipient projects. Is not that great. And we have a hundred percent track record as far as I know, don't we? I think that's worth. Handing our payment about.
Absolutely. Okay, let's see, next on the agenda will be our financial report.
Okay, so as of the end of April, we were sitting at just under eighty-five percent um, of the annual budget that we spent. I did meet with Cassie on Tuesday afternoon, um, to do projections like towards, cause we're so close to the end of the year. Um, and so, we, we're gonna be fine. We're gonna, we're, we're gonna be under budget. Um, it's just gonna be, we're not gonna have as much room as we're used to having. Um, so, yeah. We, we were looking at, you know, regular payments and stuff, if we budget those out. Um, that leaves us with around twenty thousand, but then within that twenty thousand is, we've gotta finish out paying some of our state aid categories. Like our um, contractual, our um, library supplies.
We still have outstanding invoices for like the books and such.
Exactly. So yeah, so we, we'll be okay, we will be within our budget. Um, and then as of April thirtieth, um, we had received just under seventy-five hundred dollars. In fines and business service fees. I know last I checked, that was closer to eighty-five hundred though, so that's just within a few weeks, we've gotten like a thousand more dollars. I've noticed really that we do a lot of faxes, um, and at a dollar per page, those faxes add up.
The only place in town really corners market.
Yeah, well, and we offer, we do offer the option to scan to email, but with a lot of medical things and with a lot of government things. Um, they really, that, it's not an option to scan to email, they've gotta fax it. So I think just within the past two weeks, I've faxed, um, some. Multiple people have brought in like FEMA stuff.
Mm-hmm, they're trying, they've extended the deadlines, so they're trying to submit their paperwork and they will not take it scanned to email.
Yeah, so I think, yeah, so I think faxing may sound outdated, but it's still a very important service and it brings in a lot of money trust too.
Good money, Michael.
Awesome. Okay, um, unfinished business.
So.
So we've got our strategic plan.
Yes. So this, um, our, the annual re- review of our strategic plan is something that, um, we're expected to do. And include these dates on our state aid application. So as part of our state aid requirement, we're expected to have a strategic plan. Um, and do an annual review. Um, so I went through, um, and you can see where we kind of marked through ones before. Um, that we felt like we had already met. Um, but I have highlighted some that I, that I think we've met since then. Um, so we have replaced the Tazwell carpet. Um, we've replaced the Tazwell circulation desk. And we've recently updated the main Tazwell outdoor sign. We do need to make sure it's well lit though, so we need to get those little spotlights to shine on it. Um, I still would like to meet with county maintenance. Um, I'm thinking I'm gonna meet with them at the first of July when we have our brand new maintenance budget. Um, and discuss our plan for the upcoming year about what we need them to, what we need to work on. Um, we, um, under goal number two, we have, um. We have created a teen advisory committee and they're actually meeting monthly, not quarterly. They had their first meeting this past Monday and they had, I think, seven teens show up, which for a teen program y'all is great. Um, at, kind of a, kind of a side note too, um. Bluefield also has a significant amount of teens who come in there after school. So we're trying to develop some programming to give them something to do besides just hanging out and maybe get into trouble. Um, so we're working on getting them, you know, a book, a teen book club up and going. Um, I think. There's enough, there's another program that we were looking at getting, going for the teen, but um, maybe it is.
We did, we did drag some out.
Yes, that is. Okay, perfect. So I'm wondering if we couldn't also get one going in Bluefield and get them participating like that.
There's a lot of kids there after school.
Yes, I mean, like, really a lot of kids.
Absolutely.
I feel like that's such a good problem to have, like, teens in the library, maybe they get a little rowdy, but, yeah.
I think it's convenient that it's the library because we should be able to offer them something instructive to do.
Yes, exactly. Um, so I think Ms. Belinda's coming up with some ideas of how they can work with that.
Is this the appropriate time for a suggestion on the strategic plan? Would I be in order to say something?
Yes.
Is that all right?
That'll be fine.
Is it complete?
Or, I mean, is it regarding this, um, what she's talking about, the objectives here? Or we can let her finish going through the edits. You wanna let her finish going through the edits?
Okay.
That she's made and then we'll let you be first to.
Okay, cool. Um, we've, um, expanded the therapy dog program and really that's not exactly through us. Because, um, Jane and Duke aren't technically library employees. Um, they just work very closely with us. Cause so they feel like an extension of the library. Um, but, um, Duke has been visiting. You may have seen, he was in the news for visiting A A S C recently, his one hundredth visit. Um, so I feel like that's gone really well. Um, I know we've also, under objective three, we've, we've expanded senior outreach to more nursing homes and independent living facilities and homebound seniors. Um, the one maybe that we can improve on is the homebound seniors part. Um, but I think we have expanded some on that, so that's good. Um, under goal number four, objective number two, have one ongoing teen program in each location. I do feel like we've met. Met that objective. Um, even Pocahontas has programming on Wednesdays. Their Wednesday fun day is all ages. Um, and she actually has been seeing some teens lately, which is exciting. Um, and then under objective number three. Um, goal number five, objective number three, the last one. Um, evaluate and enhance the Pocahontas library collection. Um, I think, I think we've met that one, we have enhanced it significantly. We've gone through and weeded a lot out that they don't necessarily have room for on their shelves. Um, and then establish a weeding process and schedule is another one that we've worked towards, especially here in Tazwell with all. The past few months with getting everything in place here.
Awesome. Now what year are we in with this, five year?
Um, this is through twenty twenty-six.
One more year.
So we've got one more year and then we'll be looking at doing a strategic plan.
All right, let's let Carol, uh, give her suggestion.
Well, I know this is through twenty twenty-six, but I also know that you're probably preparing the new strategic plan as you roll through meeting the goal. And in the current, um, changing. Political climate with decreases in budgetary allotments to even the Library of Congress. As well as others, my suggestion is that we revisit. I had it, I'm sorry. Um. Because it's front and back, I'm constantly having issues. It's our mission statement, what, where is our mission?
It's right here.
Right, right there. Under mission, that, vision and values, we have a mission statement, which I agree with and is great. But I don't think for non-librarian persons who contribute. Funds through their own budgetary process above and beyond the state minimums, I don't think that's going to be sufficient. Is my suggestion, that we, um, consider something much more direct and targeted. Or, we know we want an engaged community, but to what end? Do we want increased literacy rates? Do we want, I think literacy rates are really important right now. Graduation rates, um, you know, jobs in our community are really, really important. So, I don't have a perfect sentence to suggest at the moment, but I think we should amend and evolve. And perhaps refine our mission statement. And because we achieve all those things. That's what we do with the library and we do it through engagement. But I think we need to be prepared for criticisms as we have dealt with in the past. Remember that flip remark we dealt with how many years ago, who needs the library anymore? I think that may be silent but, and unspoken right now. Why should we waste our budgetary funds on the library? All they do is have social events, right? All they do is bring kids in for camp. Well, we know that those events bring them into literacy. Which brings them, right, and people who need employment, we know the ultimate goal. And I think we need to reflect that in our mission statement. And of course, then we'll have an engaged community. Uh, I'm very concerned that people on the outside of the library just don't understand. Obviously, if you all watch the news and I've watched, um, what do you call it? Not a report of, but the direct speaking. And there was a political person who I don't know. And, but the point is, they were a decision maker and they did not know that the Library of Congress was not a lending library. Like we are, we're a lending library, they're a repository and they do, right? And they were like, oh, we have to remove all these children's books because they're inappropriate. Now, we would never agree that they're inappropriate, but the Library of Congress was not in a position to have control. And of course, I'm sure behind the scenes, the director who was fabulous, she was the first librarian. To also be the director of the Library of Congress in decades and was just fabulous. I, I actually, as much as I talk in here, I haven't talked about how I've been following her and her work in the Library of Congress. And they just fired her. You know, she said something behind the scenes, oh yeah, they fired her overnight.
Yeah.
I wanna say her name was Carla Powell, is that who it was? Anyway, um. They, obviously, they don't understand libraries. So that's my suggestion, is that we consider refining our mission statement.
Well, with that in mind, I was looking at the committee. And so I think this is who helped form it. But both of our trustees are now no longer serving. So we will need to look to put two on there.
Yeah.
And maybe Carol would like to serve.
That's what I was honestly. Thinking.
Well, I mean, it's just working on this that one time, so I would like to ask you to consider and we, we'll make those appointments. But yeah, that would be helpful and.
I think everything we do.
You need a job, so we'll ask you to consider it. I've already pulled her in to be on the foundation. We have to have two trustees on the foundation.
Everybody knows, I think the work we do, not just us as trustees, obviously, but the library and the personnel in the library. I'm so proud of our library and I'm just concerned about outsiders that have control over the budgetary process and. Um, I think we ought to.
And Carol, we also know that it really, the trustee board's very important in how the library functions. Cause we have work to hire a good, young, energetic director and we have work to get the foundation board functioning. And to get our committees and to get, get these things going as they need to be. So it's important whenever we have these type of things for trustees to step up and, you know, take a active role to be sure. Because we are mapping that out for the.
That's right.
Work to keep going. So thank you all. Anything else on the strategic plan? We have a year and then we're gonna need to, um, have another one ready, so I don't know when we need. How long ahead do you think we need to get a committee appointed and get going?
I would think the last six months of twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
So we have one ready to go in twenty twenty-seven.
Okay, so, got a year and a half. This one will still be good.
About one thing, I don't know if it comes under this or not. We discussed one time that we should consider doing a program at the library on our hand.
Yes.
And I think we still need to do that. I mean, it's alarming to me. The number of deaths in this area and the number of overdoses.
Yes.
And happening in business places.
So I've talked with Barry Brooks. Um, so we're in early talks. Because we had talked about doing September, they have like Save a Life Day, but we talked about expanding that into doing some programming.
Yeah.
Um, through the month of September. And so I've been in contact with Barry Brooks. And then I've been, al- also been in contact with somebody from the Save a Life organization. Um, about getting some of that set up for September, so we can have that.
Cause I saw some remarks recently. That said that it was surprising the number of people. That don't know how to use Narcan.
Yes.
And the number of people that even if they had it, if it happened to be a stranger. That they didn't know if legally they should do it. That's something you can.
Yeah.
Chime in on there when we do this. There is law on that.
I know.
And, um, I think that it, we just need to make the public aware.
Yeah.
Of what can be done, what can't be done, how to use it, how to get it. I'm assuming from one article that I read. That you can ask your physician's office. To get Narcan. And I'm assuming that's really true.
The, the best place that I've, um, had, the best place that I've had love with is I think Cumberland Mountain, is that right? Um, cause I know Dustin Keith, who works with them, he's gone actually to all of our branches and done Narcan training. So all of our libraries do have Narcan.
Good.
On site, um, and I think almost all of our staff has been trained and they've, they've been by multiple times to make sure we're refreshed. And trained in everything.
It's Cumberland Mountain.
Yes.
Cumberland Mountain Service, Community Service Board.
Yeah.
C M, some other initials.
Yes, C M T S B. And yeah, they'll, they give out all kinds of swag, like, um, cause there's not just Narcan, they do like lock boxes for medication. I have to use that at my house, all of my medications at my house are locked up.
Well, I think more people need to be aware of that.
Yes, um, they also have, there are these things, like these pill bottles that like, they tell you if you've already opened it that day. Like if you're someone who has memory issues, can't remember if they've taken their medication, there's something about the bottle, like, I forget exactly. There's a bunch of other things that they do too. So I think they're another partner that we definitely need to be in touch with.
You know, we need them at a meeting at, at some, at their.
Yeah.
Isn't the, my brain's tired. The box for like, um, to shock them that they're putting. The A D D, yeah, A D T. Do you all have those in the libraries?
Okay.
And anyone change? We did?
We did. We did. I think our one here in Tazwell just died recently.
I think all of the batteries, we got them so long ago, they needed replaced. And I believe Mr. Brooks said he got those through a grant.
Okay.
And that grant was no longer available, so we no longer have that.
And you know, the sheriff's deputies have EMS trained.
Yeah.
Also hopefully, we can train everybody how to be calm in a crisis and dial nine-one-one.
I think that's very important.
Yeah.
Some training that I think we really need to have in September is CPR and first aid training. And the A E D part, because that was part of when I did, cause we've had before.
And you know, people hate the mouth-to-mouth part because the person who's possibly unconscious, not, will help, but not breathing. You know, they're often. you know, they're often, nobody wants to share saliva. So if we just had the masks available and then they have that little, like a plastic straw fitted into it. And then you do appropriate mouth-to-mouth, but you have a barrier so people are more willing.
By now, they just tell you, just do the chest compressions. If it's someone that you don't want to do mouth-to-mouth with.
Which is better than nothing, but it's actually all about getting that oxygen. So at any rate, I agree. One more thing, the library is all things to all people, aren't we?
Yeah. Usually that association though, well, sometimes you can get, I don't know if they do necessarily grant, but usually when they put it in, whether you go through the American Heart Association or someone else, usually they'll, like everything is taken care of and they come annually and check on your, your stuff too. So I would recommend, and usually I would assume if it's something of a state, American Heart Association. So they do like, they do their simulator, they teach CPR, they teach how to use it, all that fun stuff for the certification.
So they do that in the school system, they do, where all the schools hand them.
So do they provide any equipment?
That's what they, you usually can contact them, I don't know what the process is to them. I don't know necessarily through the library what they would do. Uh, but most associations like they'll usually do that.
Yeah, that would be good, someone to reach out to. Okay, I lost the engine, oh, here it does.
While we're on the topic of like health and associated with the library, I've been able to deep dive lately into a lot of pain care studies. And so just to, uh, just quickly point out that science is telling us that in pain care, especially when we're talking it, it can be, pain again is a big word, it's complex, it's very dependent. But being in gatherings of spokes can help decrease pain. And so it can be chronic pain, like as age, chronic pain conditions, but also pain associated to addiction. Studies show that being in a gathering of folks, especially if it's pain, it can help lower pain.
Yeah.
But most of the things, especially when Carol was sharing about the, like engaging the community and like how and it's helping, that kind of came to my mind is again, like how maybe under the surface, it, it helps people's lived experiences and their current pain.
Yeah, I agree.
I agree.
And we have been, I don't know, it's been a while. I for, I was looking, when I was looking for those papers.
Yeah.
Do you realize that I've been on the board since twenty sixteen? I could not believe it's been that long. So I don't know when back there it was, but we was talking about partnering with Carillion or some of the local health agencies and areas to increase. Are we still doing that? Do, do we have any partnerships?
Um, so, yes, we actually just had, I think it was Carillion come in.
They were here last Wednesday.
Two, okay, thank you.
Last Wednesday?
Mother Goose Day.
Yes.
That's.
Wednesday morning is our busiest time of the week because we have two sessions of Mother Goose that morning. And Mother Goose is probably our most popular program. They had to, they had to expand it to offer two different sessions. Um, so they came in and set up a table. I think it's their like new day recovery. So yes, and I think we have another organization that we, another health organization that we've talked about partnering with. But also on the topic of health, we're at, so I'm part of, like there's, there's an organization that's like trying to get up and going. It's like a community health coalition type thing. And it's bringing together all these different community organizations. Just so we can all be aware of all the services that there are in the area. We can connect our patrons with those services. And, yeah, does that make sense? Um, so it's, it's just getting off the ground. And I think we have our next meeting in June, talking about what this looks like and how to get it going. But I think that also brings up a lot of potential for like partnerships in the future.
Karen, excuse me, do you know Karen Monkey?
Oh, yeah.
There at, because she has been going around and doing some like teaching and that may be something that you could get her to come.
The last time I heard, her title was Community Outreach.
Yeah.
But of course, that might have changed by now, but that was.
Carillion has come before, we, we could probably get them to come again. Cause they've come here and they've come in Richland, as I know, and done like little blood pressure and glucose readings for whoever. So we're welcome to.
And it's trying to get a better hold on medical care in our area. Since obviously our medical care is failing. So they might be very willing to come in and do a, a meeting.
I think she would, I think Karen would work on a regular schedule, maybe once a month, come in and do things.
Yeah, she could sit up.
Find a spot for her.
Yeah.
Cause like she did a lot of education on the norovirus. She was going to different places and doing that.
Right.
And even kids, I mean, to teach them about that.
Right.
Can help cut down and prevent the spreading of that.
Yeah.
Cause it was bad this year.
Yeah.
Awesome, sounds great. Okay, we are now moving from the strategic plan to the collection development policy. Uh, we are at gifts and donations. And we've tabled that a time or two, so let's take a look at that. Do you have a paper?
I don't have a paper.
Do you, let me give you my paper and we'll let you read it and then we'll discuss it like we have been doing. I'll peek off of her patchy's paper.
I should put him at the head of the table, but since he's lying in. We'll pretend he's at the head of the table.
Uh, gifts and donations. Tazewell County Public Library accepts donations and materials from patrons or organizations. The library reserves the right to incorporate donated materials into its collection to donate them for a Friends of the Library book sale or to dispose of them as the staff see fit. The library will not accept donation if the donation, if the donor places restrictions on the disposition of the materials, of the material.
Okay, I think that sounds good.
Sounds reasonable.
Just move on and then.
Okay. Uh, donations must meet the same standards for inclusion in the collection as items that are bought. Materials that are not accepted, National Geographic magazines, Reader's Digest, condensed encyclopedias, damaged books, formats that are not currently being accepted. So good.
And what about textbooks?
May I make a suggestion? Um, what would you think if we substituted the word that purchased for bought? Donations must meet the same standards for inclusion in the collections as items that are purchased.
Instead of bought.
My thesaurus is speaking in my ear.
Sounds good. Any other comments on this section?
Uh, my question was also about textbooks.
Mm-hmm.
Is that one, like that's also included, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because schools provide those, we talked about that a little bit. The library does not have textbooks, but they do have some types of educational books, right? We, I forgot how you worded that.
We got like books on algebra and other, that, that are secondary works, but are, whereas textbooks go in and out of, I want to say, uh, curriculum frequently, whereas these are just general.
On subjects more.
It's so easy to think they're so important to keep. But I want brownie points for the fact that when my stepfather died, I threw, he was an aeronautical engineer. And I threw out all his books on rocket science. You don't know how tempted I was to say, oh, you really need these stuff. But they're just math formulas, page by page by page, and they're just textbooks.
Yeah.
But at any rate.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay. Uh, for the Virginia Room Collection, the library accepts donations of published or bound family histories with relevance to Tazewell County family, families. Yearbooks for any school in Tazewell County are readily accepted. Donations of bad issues of periodicals are not accepted by the library as part of the collection. These periodicals may be sold by a friend of the library or given away. Newspapers are not accepted as donations. Once a donation is part of the collection, it'll be treated for evaluation the same as other materials.
Any discussion on this section? Uh, do we need to vote on this section, I think, right? That how we was doing it is we was.
I think so.
Solidifying every section.
So that we could be done.
Right, when we get to the end. So do we have a motion to accept this gifts and donations section as with the one edit to change the word bought to purchased?
I'll make a motion that we accept gifts and donations with the edit of changing, uh, the word, um, purchase or editing the word purchase into the word bought.
I'll second it. And any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries unanimously. Wow, now that was pretty quick. So our next, I thought we was gonna have to do another section.
Well, the next section is the big section.
Do we need to break it down into subparts? Or do you think that we're gonna be able to cover this all within probably fifteen, twenty minutes? Like we don't wanna spend an hour on it.
Because we've refined it so much, I'll bet you that we'll be able to rip right through it next time.
Yeah, but there's, there is also the fact that there is, um, requests for reconsideration of library materials. There's another, there's two forms and there was a response to reconsideration form. Uh, thi- this section has the biggest section where there might be, like I put in things here where y'all might totally disagree with me. And that this is probably the biggest section that needs to be reviewed.
Bring your, um, source material for, like it's the Library of Virginia standard, it's the American Library Association standard. Bring that kind of thing that you're relying on for us. And then that will make our decision much easier.
And we can divide it down too, if you've got two different forms or whatever, look at it and kind of, um, figure out where you want to divide it to make it more simple, so it's not overwhelming.
Okay, I imagine the easiest way would be to read the whole section and then read each format afterwards.
I'm sure it's gonna be fine because you've worked so hard on it, but this way we'll have a good policy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, that's the quickest one we've done.
Yeah.
Okay, see Louis Leslie Portrait, what's the update on that?
Could we table that? I have contacted Miranda about getting a portfolio together, but I didn't, I don't think she had one ready to give to me. And this is her busiest time of the year. She's got the senior art show and she's got soc, she coaches soccer.
So we'll table that to next meeting. Um, new business. Friends of the Library Resolution. We will read that out loud, um.
Could I make one suggestion to start with? Well, nevermind.
Okay, do you wanna read it or?
That's for you to read.
Okay. Uh, Tazewell County Library Board of Trustees Resolution. A resolution to acknowledge and support the Friends of the Library Organization. Whereas the Tazewell County Public Library Board of Trustees recognizes the invaluable support that the Tazewell County Public Library, Friends of the Library provide to the library and its community. And whereas the Friends of the Library contribute through fundraising, advocacy, volunteer efforts and promoting library programs and services. And whereas the efforts of the Friends of the Library help enhance the library's ability to serve the needs of its patrons by supplementing funding for educational and cultural activities, resources and materials. Now therefore being resolved that the Tazewell County Public Library Board of Trustees, one, expresses its deep appreciation to the Friends of the Library for their continued dedication and generosity in supporting the mission and programs of the library. Two, affirms its ongoing commitment to collaborate with the Friends of the Library to further strengthen the partnership between the library and the community. Three, encourages all library patrons to consider supporting and pers, to participating, excuse me, in the activities and initiatives of the Friends of the Library. Four, commits to maintaining open lines of communication with the Friends of the Library to ensure that their efforts are aligned with the library's goals and objectives. Adopted this twenty-second day of May, twenty twenty-five by the Tazewell County Public Library Board of Trustees. Sounds great and I will sign it.
Did we have a copy of that? There should be one in your pack.
There you go, if it's not in your package.
Okay.
And so, um, who are we presenting this to? Where are they gonna put it? Like you're gonna, can we frame it and you all put it up or how does it work?
We can buy a certificate packet pre-printed, you know, those little fancy squirrel paper things and we can print it on that.
And make it pretty.
Yeah, I can get one of those.
And then they can decide where they want.
To put, post it or whatever.
Yeah.
I could, could I make one suggestion grammatically? Since we don't have Connie here, right here, um, for the nu, numerical points, one, two, three. At the end of three, there's a semicolon, which I believe is appropriate. But I think at that point, we need the word and, and then of course, we finish up with four.
Yeah.
Just like we do earlier, it's just a grammatical.
Like, uh, like here, you always add and.
Okay, I understand what you're saying.
One little word.
Okay.
So after, uh, the semicolon behind the library on number three, say and.
Okay.
And then I guess you're gonna have to reprint it?
Yep, I'll reprint it on cardstock.
Okay.
Madam Chair, would it be appropriate at this time to ask our two members of the public, both who are active in the Friends of the Library, if they are, um, pleased with the resolution? Would you, do you have anything you would like us to add? That you feel like your work is worth? We want to acknowledge the work you're doing.
Well, as President, you can speak first.
Um, based off of what I heard, it sounded fantastic. Would you mind listening that to me?
I didn't see the word leadership in there. I wonder if we can acknowledge and express gratitude for their community leadership. And, cause they do a lot of programs on their own independently in addition to what they do for us. Just an off-the-cup suggestion, I just, do you feel acknowledged?
And, and I, I would hope that we do so much, you could never get a, an all-inclusive list. So I think that if there's something that isn't on there, would, for me, I'm thinking, well, sure, there's all this stuff they don't think, that doesn't get listed, but we just do it. So I don't think you need to keep adding more stuff, but you.
I agree.
Okay.
And it all fits on one beautiful certificate page, that would be nice. I actually think I have an extra one at home, but you know what, there are templates on there as well. As long as you can print and color your word program as a certificate, as a template. Either way, I can bring you the paper or you can use your template.
I do have.
For the little, you know, the decorative scroll.
Speaking as, now from my, my friend's point of view, um, we are homeless. We don't have a place where we can display stuff. When we meet, we could bring it out. But I mean, all of the treasurer's stuff is in my office closet. And the secretary's stuff is in the secretary's closet. And then that steamer trunk moves on to the next person who takes that office. But we don't actually have a location.
That would be nice if we could give you a location.
Well, but there are, and may I keep speaking?
You may.
Okay, sorry.
Um, I was going to just tell you, we had talked with Erica about making a spot on a wall somewhere and getting some of the awards that have been received, having duplicates done so they could be put in the main branch here.
A wall of, yeah.
Right, or a wall of acknowledgement, so that people actually can see what has been accomplished.
Right.
Like the one, like the awards that I've received, I mean, it's a team effort, even though that I'm the one who that went to California and received that. We know that none of this work gets done with one person, it's a team.
Well, and with having a location, I have done several of the ALA virtual Friends, um, sessions. And there is actually an issue if friends live in the library. You know, if we store our stuff here, then it kind of eliminates our separate entity, um, status. And so we are, we are meant to be homeless.
And I, and I understand that completely. But sometimes people don't even know who the Friends are or what they're doing. They don't know what the foundation is, what its role is. They don't even understand what the trustee board does.
Yeah.
Right.
And so, um.
They think the library just runs.
They do, and I think that it's important to somewhere have a wall that, you know, they can look at or see, maybe like. Maybe like where just traffic is near the bathroom or, I don't know, somewhere, wherever you choose. And then people's like, oh, well, who are the friends and who is the foundation and, you know, how does it operate? Because there is a real lack of knowledge and understanding how the library system works together and each entity kind of works together to serve the community. And we have seen that through doing the projects we've done here in Richlands and we've ironed those things out and we're still going and still making progress.
And still finding things that we need to work on.
You're exactly right. Getting ready to work on the bylaws. To make that run better. So.
This includes the and.
Okay. And um we can, if you can get a frame and let me know how much it is, I'll pay for the frame.
I'll just order it under library supply.
Under the library supplies. I don't know if this is blue or green or does it matter if I wanna sign it with?
If we get an eleven by fourteen matted down to an eight by ten.
Usually so.
That would look good.
Usually that's put into the form of a motion to vote.
I'll be glad to make a motion. This resolution as submitted with the one edit.
It's now edited, so it has an.
I second that.
And any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Motion carries unanimously.
My next suggestion is that we make a big to-do about presenting it if the friends that are present will allow us. So we can attend a meeting and make some noise.
I think we need to get a picture with Ash.
Yes.
The big frame?
Be framed.
The mats really set them off. Like these photographs up here, they're all matted. It makes a difference.
It makes a huge difference.
It does, it sets it out.
Send it to you.
So with the um being homeless but kinda having to be required to be homeless, is there anything that you feel like is, that the friends feel like is needed to help support them in that like needle brown and stuff? Or um Ash, do you wanna speak or do, cause I'm trying not to represent. I mostly am the public, but, but.
And we apologize, Ash. Jane has just been coming for two years, so we're used to, but you're here on behalf of.
Jane has better words than I do, I would say. I do, I was looking over our friend's number of blaskable days. And I will say, um, the Friends is trying to make like a bigger presence in the community, like people know we do and we know we exist. Um, but we haven't gotten that swift lead with like the full circle of the community. I don't really know how to kinda lean in, cause right now our numbers are, you know, they're, there should be a lot more. And as Jane was saying, with the Michaelis, all the things that we do, and a lot of people probably have no idea that, you know, we do do, like I was telling people Comic Con. People had no idea, you know, and small stuff like that. And so, I don't know, I think us not having like a very strong strong standing and people being like, oh, like I know what the Friends of the Library is. I know friend comes for the word library. Um, so I don't really know how to fix that or how to like kinda start getting like more traction with the community. Um, it is something that needs probably to be done with the next couple months with everything being so busy in the library, having its busy time of the year. Um, us being homeless probably doesn't, I don't know how much.
I don't think that affects it though. Cause we are pretty um. Those of us who are friends pretty much rational you to the ground when we see you. And suggest you might like to become one, but um I do think that um it helps for people to understand, you can be a friend and not come to friends meetings. You can be a friend and not have to stand out on the hot ports in, in Main Street. You can be a friend by just paying your ten bucks. We use that ten bucks to do a lot. And we actually on our applications say that you can be dues only. And people tell me all the time, I don't have time to be a friend. I'm thinking, I just want your ten bucks.
I'm a ten dollar friend.
So, so I think if there were a way that other people in the library could help people understand that what, what we do to help the library and then that being a friend can be as active or as inactive. Once you hand over the ten bucks or write your check for your ten bucks, that can be all you do or you can be really involved. And I, I think getting that message across for us as individual friends, doing that one person at a time when we meet them is hard, but if everybody connected with the library is trying to do that, that could give us a lot more friends.
Well, I've had an idea while you were speaking, you know, the library's always doing displays to celebrate certain events in the book world. And maybe the library would consider, the director would consider doing a display. And maybe for a certain month of the year or for a certain period of time. You know, we just went through a list of all the library activities on the calendar. Everything from the social event that's going on right now every Friday morning, all the way down to the book clubs and everything. So maybe a little presentation could be made every time. I'm just, you know, and that would definitely get it out there for everybody over the next calendar period of time.
I feel like October would be the appropriate month.
We always try to do some kind of display for um National Friends of the Library Week, which is third weekend in October, I think. Um, but again, I think that's, I think the word has to be out more often than that, but I also think the library can't do displays for us all the time. So it's just a way of, if people have ideas of how we can reach people without having um permanent realist, advertising real estate.
Well, I can suggest to the.
Cause then you might not be seeing us homeless.
Chris Wilks leads our book club. I don't know if he leads every book club, but I could ask him if we could invite the friends to our next book club meeting. We have six or eight people there. And frankly, I don't think the majority of us are friends.
But yeah, the rest of them are already are believing.
But think of all the events on the calendar where people are not friends. Now granted, you can't present. Well, maybe you could present to the children and they'll take forms home to their parents. That's just my suggestion.
What do you think about a photo op with all the prizes you all have funded for summer reading? I have boxes of stuff I've just opened.
One year and it was, I was really impressed with what I did.
I have boxes in there ladies of stuff you all have funded with your hard work. Yes ma'am.
And a good way to kick off summer reading coming up.
Absolutely. That would be a good way to kick off summer reading.
Yeah.
I have a question because I know um sometimes there's not enough volunteers, cause that usually comes from the friends to help with the events in the county. So about how many active friends do you have that's actually getting out and helping you all right now? Cause it wa- it was like only two or three or less than five.
And Ash is more positive. She's saying less than twenty and I'm saying ten to fifteen.
Well, I know it was more like two to four. And, and I know that there are people sometimes like elderly people or very healthy active widows or teenagers that are, they have expressed interest about helping them be volunteers.
So that's one of the, on the membership form, it says, um, do you wanna volunteer? It's one of the things they can circle. And so we mark them on our, our um membership list and the wanna help thing. And then we have the ones that might only wanna pay their dues and attend meetings. And then everybody else is dues only, and so we don't bother them. But we do send out, so everybody knows when we're, all the members know when we're doing stuff. And they, they're welcome to come in. And what I'm finding is a friend will volunteer and bring a friend to help with that. And that'll be that, that person's first time helping us with it. So that's one way we're getting more already paid friends active in doing things with the friends. But it still is um, you know, it's, it's just, it's as we all know, getting volunteers to, to do anything is hard.
It is. And I have one more question. So do you feel like that the Friends is more united or are they still kind of divided? And your friends that live in Tasswell only wanna help in Tasswell and friends in Bluefield only wanna help in Bluefield? Cause I know we've had that before, like people don't wanna come and help in Richlands if there's no event or. And so the Friends was kind of hanging in ge- geographically.
That really has not been the case. That was the case when we first started because the Friends started in Bluefield. And then we expanded it to be everywhere.
Because the Friends of Richland say it started in Richland.
It started in Bluefield. I mean, as the, the um.
The organization.
Going through the five oh one C three process, so yes.
And I think that's where some of the confusion has come through with history. Because John Willis says the Friends of the Library started in Richlands and that's who helped get the Richlands Library. So.
Well, and that may be way, way, way back. There was something before it was ever organized five oh one.
I think it was. And I think sometimes the, just the wording that is misunderstood of the communicating who the Friends are. And exactly, so we've tried to help with advocate that.
And we are definitely, peo- we're um, the Friends who are active are not held back by twenty-five miles.
Yes.
So they are going.
And I know Jane, you have been there. I've saw you, definitely.
But, so, so they're going where, where, where they are needed.
Good, around the county. Cause I like to see that.
And that's the way we live here. All of us who live in Tasswell go to, go to Walmart and. Or the Walmart aren't almost in Rich, you know, and it's, it's not like those are distances. People don't drive anywhere for their everyday activity. So, so, but I don't see now that, that it is, these are just our people and, and those are those people.
Good, I'm glad to hear that. So that's awesome. Do you have something else you wanna add, Ash?
No, I don't. I don't think so. Our numbers right now, looking at them, um, we have seventy-two active members of the Friends of the Library. Um, and we've had over two hundred, over, I don't even know how long the Friends of the Library has been saying, off the top of your head.
Did Lynn Bartlett help get that organization?
She was.
I was on the board.
So Linda Fod.
It was Lynn during her time. It was me and um.
I think twelve years maybe.
Moved to Bluefield, the Biggs, Mrs. Biggs. I forget her first name, I'm sorry, but yes, we were on the subcommittee to start that. And um Lynn was director at that time. You remember correctly.
Awesome. Because I know, just because everybody, they say, well, I am a friend of the library. You know, when we started that fundraising for the renovations in Richlands, you know, and it's like, that's confusing because everybody is Friends of the Library, but there is an organization that is the Friends.
This is not a lifetime membership for ten.
And I think some of that is just educating, educating people.
This is the library. Being run or who's doing anything for it.
If you based it on like, I don't know, a tenure or whatever. Cause you see that. Um, DWR gives the kids like lifetime fishing and it's like a really good price. But then they give it free if you're over a certain age, like if you're over fifty-five or over sixty, then you can get lifetime fishing. Cause that, but then in the middle age, in the middle age people, they really pay to get.
How do they get?
Or lifetime.
That free uh fishing license.
You just have to go on their site and apply for it.
And what site is it?
It's um, DWR Wildlife Resource, Department of Wildlife Resources.
Cause I had mentioned that mothers having the fishing thing and this guy said, gosh, but I don't have a fishing license. So he would follow.
I did not know you could purchase lifetime except my um sister purchased one of my children a lifetime.
They do it for national perks too. For national parks, national parks to get in also.
Make it enough to, to suck.
To count.
Well, we, yeah, it, it can't be twenty dollars.
No, I was thinking like a hundred or three hundred.
Figuring that we're, we're anticipating they will live.
And they'll actually, you know, be a real volunteer that really is active and. And then that would um eliminate losing people that don't pay their funds every.
It's also just easier. Sometimes it's easier to just pay something once instead of paying it.
It's kinda like car insurance.
Yeah.
So you'd want it to be at least equal to ten or fifteen years, you know? If it's ten dollars a year, mercy, yeah. Good thought. All right, you all.
Very much.
Thank you all very much. Thank you everybody for coming. And um even though that you all are friends, do you have any extra public comments? Cause you all are the.
Jane's here as a member of the public.
I'm here as a member of the public.
Say something else, Jane. Go ahead.
No, no. I think I have said it, um, and maybe I do wanna say that I really, it was nice to see the whole board together. And it was nice to have it just move right along. So I appreciate.
You're welcome. All right, nothing else. What is our next date?
I was going to ask you about that.
Fancy lady is gonna be in Italy.
Our next meeting is scheduled for the night.
And you're not coming back for the meeting?
I will be in Italy, unfortunately.
And you can't zoom in?
And it will be ten o'clock at night in Italy. My, my bedtime is eight thirty really.
So will you be back? Can we do it the twenty-sixth? Or how long you gonna be gone?
I, I will. I'm supposed to get an MRI done on the twenty-sixth is the thing. I'm, I maybe could reschedule that, um.
What about the twelfth? Like, I don't know what your dates are that you're leaving.
We probably should go after, not earlier, is my suggestion. The twenty-sixth. Did Chris time to do his work and?
I'll call and reschedule the MRI. I need longer to take my piercings out between when I get back.
Andrew's gonna sit on you and I'm gonna take him out.
Sometimes it's hard to get this MRI scheduled then.
Okay.
Like what ti- is the timeframe, um, is your MRI late in the day?
I think it's earlier in the day on the twenty-sixth. So I maybe could do it if we, if we meet at our usual time at three thirty on the twenty-sixth.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
June twenty-sixth, three thirty. Where they could potentially start without you and then circle back to you if you're late.
I think, I should, I should be back by three thirty on the twenty-sixth.
And if you think you're gonna be late, just send a message and we can push it forward thirty minutes or something. We used to meet at five thirty. I'm very happy to be meeting at three thirty.
That's true.
So that I'm not nine o'clock getting home.
Yeah, that's true.
Jade, could I ask you while I'm remembering? I have a mailing address, a P O box to mail me my packets, whoever's mailed me.
And Erica, we, we'll just do it here. So that'll be close home. Is your MRI in Tasswell or like? Any, somewhere else be closer is what I'm asking, with one of the other branches.
Don't even worry about it. It's, it's in Bristol. It's gonna be forever either way.
Okay, so we'll plan to meet here on the twenty-sixth at three thirty unless that um we hear from you. And do we have a motion to adjourn?
I moved, we adjourn this meeting.
And second. And no discussion. All in favor? Aye. Meeting adjourned.
Hey, good work.
Thank you, thank you.
And then would you be able to be here on the.
I'll probably, I probably will be coming again from, but I'm just.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Uh yoga therapy program, so I'm still like continuing on with it, but.
Yeah, so whatever.
You're so right.